Good evening. It is now 6:30, and I'd like to call to order the Monday, November 14th, 2016 Burnsville Planning Commission. Commissioners, thank you very much for your time this evening. I appreciate your efforts and staff. Thank you very much. Our first item this evening is the adoption of the agenda. Fellow commissioners, do we have any additions or changes to this evening's posted agenda? None from commissioners, staff, any changes?
None from staff.
Hearing no changes, I would entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda. Moved by Commissioner Benke.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walter. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay, and the motion carries. Our second item on the agenda this evening is approval of the October 24th Planning Commission meeting. Commissioners, do you have any changes or comments on our posted minutes from the 24th? None from the commission?
None from staff.
None from staff. Hearing no changes or adjustments, I would stand for a motion. Moved by Commissioner Workman, second by Commissioner Benke. Am I going too fast? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay, and the motion carries. That does bring us to the third item on our agenda this evening, and it is a public hearing. It's an application of the City of Burnsville to consider an amendment to City Code Title 10, Chapter 7, general provisions relating to auto dealership remote storage. Ms. Dean is our presenter this evening. Ms. Dean, you have the floor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair members of the Commission. This is a proposed amendment to the existing ordinance. Some of you were on the commission and may remember that we made a change to the ordinance to allow temporary storage of vehicles onto properties with approval of an application in certain performance standards. So, to kind of step back to give you a history, prior to 2015, we didn't have this application process for temporary storage available. Basically, if somebody wanted to have outdoor storage of vehicles, it would be done through conditional use permit, planning and development, or an interim use permit. You may think of like a Nissan dealership or Toyota dealership, they have their building and then associated outdoor storage, and those approvals either went through a PUD or conditional use for the outdoor storage of those vehicles. Or you may see off-site, for example Buck Hill, or some of our gateway industrial zoning districts allow for outdoor storage of vehicles on an interim basis on lots within those areas. So, they went through a specific approval review in front of Planning Commission Council. Those approvals are approved on the property itself, so it runs with the land or runs with the property. So, in 2015, kind of had the reaction of some illegal car storage onto commercial property, specifically Burnsville Center was identified, that these vehicles were being stored there. And so, staff wanted to work with the property owner and the car dealerships in town to see, you know, why is this occurring, and how can we, how can we work with the businesses to get them into compliance? So, through research, review by our staff at that time, analysis with market cities within the region, and then also nationally, they brought back information to a work session, city council work session, and then were directed to develop an ordinance. And that was before Planning Commission, Planning Commission recommended approval to the city council. And with that approval, it was really on a temporary basis, six months was the timeframe that a auto dealer could apply for a permit on a property. And it was subject to very specific zoning districts, our business zoning districts, our I-3 zoning districts, and then certain gateway industrial districts, as well as our commercial recreation district, I believe. And so, in order to do that, the applicant would have to make application, pay a fee, and was subject to certain performance standards, and those are listed in our city code. As part of that approval, council added a condition that the ordinance be reviewed in one year to monitor, you know, what's going on, is this effective, do we need to make changes, do we need maybe to repeal the ordinance? And so, that one-year period came in October of this year. And so, staff brought back the analysis that was done in the past, provided history, and staff was directed to increase the time period from six months to 12 months for auto dealers. We're seeing that there's demand for car storage off-site because car dealers are kind of at their, at their limits right now, and there's a desire to have these cars located in close proximity to their dealerships for the customers, ease of customer response time. And also, a lot of the, or the parking lot right now where we have a permit for, there is a large, large availability, I would say, for vehicle storage. So, this is unused land essentially where vehicles can be stored, and it doesn't interrupt the existing business on site. So, with that information, the city council did, again, recommend that that six-month timeframe extend to 12 months. All the other language in the ordinance will remain the same, so the same performance standards will be in place. If the applicant doesn't essentially abide by the performance standards, the city does have the right to revoke the permit or revoke those approvals. Those would still be in place. So, with that, the proposed change is pretty simple, essentially changing it from a six-month period to a 12-month period, and striking out the language with reference to, to that. Staff does recommend approval of the proposed ordinance change to the city council as presented. Certainly, if anybody has questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those further.
Commissioners, questions for staff. Thank you, Ms. Dean. I'm sorry.
I have one quick question, Chair.
Commissioner Workman, you on the floor.
Thank you, and thank you for the information. I know it was touched on in our background, but can you clarify if this is specifically for Burnsville dealerships, or can any other dealership from any other city apply for this?
The way the ordinance reads now, it is specific to Burnsville businesses.
Okay.
And so, staff is not proposing to change that language.
So, it would have to be a dealership within Burnsville?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Workman, other questions?
Sure.
Sorry, Commissioner. Commissioner Workman, other questions?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. Commissioner Benke.
Thank you. Gina, just for some clarification, and it, just to go with what Commissioner Workman was talking about, the Burnsville dealership, they can't bring in cars from, like if it's a Toyota dealership, they can't bring in, and their particular dealership owns other makes, they can't also bring in cars from outside, outside Burnsville. Basically, they're limited to the cars for the dealership in Burnsville.
That would be correct.
And then, this permit is renewed yearly with each applicant?
It is, correct. So, for example, with this fee, the fee schedule will also be changing, assuming that this moves forward. So, in 2017, the fee will be $2,500. The recommended fee change for 2018 will then be $5,000 annually. So, each year, they would have to reapply for the permit.
So, the city has a really good way of managing it on a yearly basis?
We do.
It appears that this is going to become a longer-term use then for these areas? I mean, I think we're really seeing some of these areas that are going to end up being car storage lots for a while, basically.
It, I mean, if I can answer that, it would be longer than the six-month period, but from a land use perspective, it does not encumber the land per se, like a conditional use permit would, or a planning and development would. So, it could be viewed as more temporary in nature.
Right.
And then, also, very market-driven, the property owner needs to sign off on the permit. So, let's say, well, using Burnsville Center as an example, they may have a freestanding new business that wants to occupy a portion where the vehicles are stored. They could say, okay, you need to leave, we're not resigning your lease, or you need to be out within X amount of time according to their lease agreement, and they would work with the developer, or they would develop the, the property such.
Right. We, it is an interim use, and we are looking for the higher and better, it's just not here yet.
Right.
Okay. Then, this is limited to, this ordinance only covers certain districts, correct?
That's correct. It's the B-3, B-4, CRD, which is the, the Commercial Recreational District, Buck Hill, for example.
Right.
I-3, GIM, and the GIH, Gateway Industrial Medium and Gateway Industrial High.
Okay, so anybody not in one of those zoning districts, they, they're not allowed to store cars in there?
Right, without the approval of like a conditional use permit, for example.
Right. And then, given that it's come up with a couple of the lots, is there anything in here that we would want to put in about loading and unloading? Or is the, or are the districts that we are working in sufficiently removed from residential districts to not be an issue for the most part?
Um, I mean, we haven't had a request yet for something that directly abuts residential. I mean, I think that, I'm just looking at the existing ordinance, it, off-street loading, off-street parking and loading is required to follow our typical performance standards, so it would likely be covered under that. If you certainly want to get more specific, that's something that you could, you know, recommend an amendment to the existing ordinance as well.
Sure, and I guess the reason I bring it up is that when it is a CUP or it is an IUP, you're looking at each one individually, and you have the ability to offer that comment, and perhaps incorporate it into the, into the approval. Since this is going, basically rightly so, going to staff, you know, giving them that additional leverage might be wise. Thank you.
Commissioner Benke, can I, Ms. Dean, I'd like to continue that thought. So, since we are pushing this to be an administrative-level decision, from your perspective, do you have information, or do you have policies and procedures in place today that would allow you, per applicant, to be able to address that issue as, as it's in there today?
We do have lighting and noise standards that could help address some of the issues that I would envision could occur from, from something, as Commissioner Benke was mentioning. Just thinking about, I'm thinking of the zoning map in my head right now, and where these commercial properties and the GIM and GIH zoning districts are, industrial, likely many of them, a majority of them would not abut residential. So, I'm fairly confident that these parking lot, these parking lots, lot areas would not necessarily need that additional protection because it's, it's already covered in the code.
Let me, yeah, I guess, keep in mind that the, the reason that I even brought it up was because of the Toyota comments that we got a couple of weeks ago, that most of these are more removed from residential.
I would say so.
Commissioner, say.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, Ms. Dean, I assume that this is just for temporary storage, and no showing of vehicles, or new vehicles, no showing to customers will be done.
It's purely for storage, so sales of vehicles, transaction of vehicles could not occur per the performance standards.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair.
I don't know if-
Go ahead, Ms. Dean.
To your left, Deb had possibly a question. I don't know.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I was just going to interject that for this permit, it's for only existing parking lots. For Burnsville Toyota, for example, that was a development that required a CUP, so that analysis and those conditions were included, but this would be for existing parking lots.
Right, and I was trying to make the point, I think, that, that basically drove this question about these parking lots themselves, so I do understand. Thank you.
Commissioner Levy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. New and used car storage, or just new?
Just, the, the existing ordinance is for, for new consumer vehicles.
Okay, back on this, on the noise issue, loading and unloading the car trailers is a noisy business, and there are, I think it's apartments or condos, not far from Burnsville Center, for example. I can see noise being an issue if there's going to be loading and unloading during the night, for example, when I think with the Toyota dealership, we had that question come up, that there was late-night activity. Do we choose to put in something that limits it to whatever we said with Toyota, for example, nine to five, or whatever the numbers would be during daytime?
Commissioner Levy, it's a good question. Typically, I'm not in support of additional rules or regulations that's going to cause the city a tougher way to enforce. That was- If the city believes today, in the, in the, in the document as it's written, if they have, we have statutes in reference to lighting or to noise, that they can, could handle it administratively, when we start dictating start and stop times for things like this, and that, that's an additional burden on staff to, is it actually happening, or is it not happening, and how do they, how do they enforce it? Is typically where we have landed in, in the past. It's not something we can't do today, but that's usually my, my thought process has always been, is there a way for staff to handle it today and not burden them and get to the, to the end means of not? Because in many cases, I do think too, that, like, to your point though about Burnsville Center, honestly, if you were to stand out there when they're unloading the truck, the noise of the interstate is far louder than any, than any noise. When I was standing near the Toyota dealership, the noise of the car wash was washed from the noise from the interstate.
Okay.
Commissioner Walter, you have any questions? You live near there.
No, I would, thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I would concur with your assessment. There's trucks going in and out of the mall, too, at this stage. I think this is limited in geography to areas that's, you're right, I do live just about, you know, right across the street from the mall, so, so I would concur with that.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Dean, I just, one final question. I'd like to clarify a couple of things. We, we had done the Walzer Subaru, where they actually have an extended period of time because of investment in the property with the fence and the parking lot, and I just want to make sure everybody understands, that's a little different situation than what we're approving here today. This is for an existing parking lot in these specific areas where they're going to be parking cars without security and additional lighting and everything that's different than what we've done in the past.
Right, so the intent of the, the ordinance when it was originally approved was for open parking lots accessible to the general consumer, that it would not be screened with any additional barriers or additional fencing to close it off, that the existing landscaping and existing parking lot screening would, like any other commercial development, for example, would be it, that this would, other than the new vehicles in specific locations, this would look and smell like in any other commercial development. Maybe it, you know, is Walmart or the Target parking lot, or Menards, something like that. But, the only application so far that we've received is for the Burnsville Center, but it could be one of those locations.
We don't have one for the golf greens, excuse me, Chair.
Go ahead.
We don't have one for the, not the golf course, but the driving range.
That is an application where one of the dealerships is looking to the city to see if they can purchase land in order to do that. So, that would be a, that would likely be something that would come before you as some type of a conditional use permit or-
Saw a whole line of cars there, that I assumed that they were using that already as storage.
They are. Okay.
I know they're looking at the archery range.
The archery range, someone is looking at.
Commissioner Levy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One other thought, this was all a long time ago, they put up a parking lot. Does Burnsville one look like a parking lot? This is just a generic question. We have it already in the ordinance, but we're review, we're looking at it again to review it. I drive on 35, and I see the Subaru parking lot, I go by the Burnsville Center, I see the, the parking lot. Do we want to look like a parking lot?
Commissioner Benke.
Commissioner Levy, I, I, that was my same thought when I first saw this, but I realized that when you look at our role, you know, we're looking at the ordinance, and we're looking for, is this reasonable, and is it clear so that potential applicants can understand it? And I, I realized, and I was able to set it aside for myself anyway, that that question is for the council.
Okay.
You know.
And Commissioner Levy, I would further the point that this is for existing parking lots that are in place. So, please step back and think that any, a new parking lot would have to go through a completely different application. This is simply a use for an existing parking lot that is in place today, and allowing that particular landowner to monetize that section for a period of time. If somebody was going to build a brand-new parking lot for this use, there would be a completely separate application come in front of us and from the city council for the purchase and development of that parking lot.
I understand that for a, a part, a development for that specific use. A new business comes in, has a large parking lot, does this ordinance now apply to them also? It's, it's not existing today, and it's a separate business. Oh, let's say, for example, where all these is going in, in front of all these on 42. Could that, it's an existing parking lot?
That, that is a, that is a possibility, but as Commissioner Benke said, that would be up to the city council at that point to set.
But at this point, wouldn't staff be?
They would be involved in the initial application-
Okay.
-for the, for the, whatever the development would be.
Right.
Once it's built, then there, if the applicant wanted to come in and administratively use that parking lot this way, they, they could.
Okay.
Commissioner Benke.
I'm confused then, too, because I think I've heard both, that it's for existing, but if somebody came in new, they would need to meet these same standards?
Yeah.
For example, At Home, you know, I mean, I, with all these, I think the lot's a little small, but At Home, huge lot, not really full. That's very similar to Burnsville Center, so what happens if At Home wants to come in and ask for a permit?
As long as there is nothing that specifies specifically in their previous approvals, like a PUD or CUP, a property owner could, in conjunction with the dealer, apply for this permit, pay the fee, as long as they meet all the performance standards, city staff would issue the permit. Of course, if they become non-compliant, you know, there's complaints that they're not meeting these performance standards, and we could revoke the permit. But is, it is possible for, you know, some, somebody like At Home to, to make application.
That is an existing lot.
That's, that was my, that was my point, I think, too, in the C.
Skeros, I'm sorry, I haven't been looking in your direction.
No problem. Getting back a little bit to Commissioner Levy's question, what Burnsville would like to see is, we would like to see the parking areas that we have utilized to the best that they can be. We do have maximum parking standards that the, we introduced into the ordinance a number of years ago to limit vast seas of parking, if you will, but Burnsville also has a lot of existing lots where there is excess parking available, and rather than create new, just parking areas for these types of things, we'd rather utilize some of these bigger parking spaces that don't use 100% of their parking, or something like this. Now, that's a little bit different in the Minnesota River Quadrant. In that case, the council has identified that as an interim use, because I don't see the area redeveloping in the near future, that this auto parking could be approved via an interim use permit, and you have seen, I think, two or three of these interim use permits. So, tho, those would be the only cases, I think, where you would see actually creating a parking lot with no principal use on it. It really, this is to allow the dealerships that have told us these past couple of years, they're receiving more pressure from the auto manufacturers to have on hand a larger amount of stock than they would even prefer to have. But that's something that, that they're forced to deal with, so in order to address this, as Ms. Dean had indicated, some of the dealers have been parking vehicles in these lots, and it's been an enforcement, kind of a difficulty from an enforcement standpoint, so that's why we came up with this original, this permit. But I just wanted to let you know, I don't think it is the, the intent of the council just to create lots of parking lots.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Workman.
I just have one follow-up question. If a building owner's going to apply for this, I think you're going to have to obviously meet proof of parking standards, is there a minimum that the city is saying you can do this, but you have to have X amount of cars in order to do this? I mean, you couldn't do five or six, you would need to have a certain threshold met in order to get the application through?
Um, I, there is nothing that says there's a minimum for application, that would be up to someone willing to pay the fee, make application, provide a site plan showing where these cars would be located, so it would be, it would be up to the person applying to decide if it's worth it for them or not, I guess.
I suppose the fee probably disincentivizes the smaller-
Right.
...option. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Workman. Any other questions for staff? This is a public hearing. At this point, I will open the public hearing and ask anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this item to please step up the podium and give us your thoughts. Seeing no one from the audience that wants to speak to this item, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, you have the floor. Discussion.
I don't think there's anything to discuss, Chair.
Kind of a lot of our system.
I think, I think the biggest thing that we wanted to do here was to make sure that our staff has got the tools they need to adequately administer this.
And you do?
I, I, that's what we heard, I think, so I think we're in good shape.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Yep, absolutely, and I think we've, I think we have clarified it. I would definitely want to offer a motion if I could.
You have the floor, Ms. Commissioner Benke.
Very good. I, I would recommend that the planning commission recommend approval of the proposed ordinance changes to the city council as presented.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Workman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay, and the motion carries. This takes us to the fourth item on our agenda this evening. The fourth item is also a public hearing. Public hearing application for David, David Kuchar for a conditional use permit to proceed to finalize his building permit to install solar panels on the refus home and garage located at 1400 149th Street West. Ms. Garros is presenting this evening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, members of the commission. I would just like to note that Mr. Kuchar is in the audience this evening, and you may well want to address the planning commission as we go through the public hearing. For the application, we're looking at a corner lot at 1401 49th Street West. It's a single-family neighborhood, and at about 149th Street- It's a single-family neighborhood and at about one hundred and forty-ninth Street to the south and Hillside Lane to the east. In terms of the ordinance, there is quite a bit of background information in your report. For those commissioners who are newer, the planning commission and city council and staff spent a good year and a half, almost two years, working on the update to the solar ordinance, which was adopted in March of this year. The primary, one of the primary interests from both planning commission and council was how would solar look? Where should it be located in the city, under what conditions and what performance standards, et cetera? For the application that's before you this evening, it is for a conditional use permit. And the conditional use permit was added to the ordinance in order to allow individuals to come before planning commission and council if they had designs or alternative types of installations that they wanted to have considered. Staff is not able to approve something different than what the ordinance parameters are. The conditional use permit is the tool for the property owners to go through. And then planning commission and council can take a look at the site, any unique characteristics and the application itself and make a determination then and apply whatever conditions you deem appropriate. For this particular application, the part of the ordinance that we're looking at is under our performance standards and they're under aesthetic criteria in the ordinance. And when you have rooftop panel systems, number four identifies that the placement of those panels should be uniform and the slope proportions of the array shall match the shape and proportions of the roof. When the planning commission and council reviewed the ordinance, this is one of the photographs that was included in the, we had lots and lots of pictures and, and discussion at, at all levels. And for a hip roof, which is the type of roof that the applicant has on, on his home, what the planning commission and council had indicated is that they thought that there should be a design similar to this, which does include triangular panels, if you will, to follow that hip roof line. Until this application, we have not had a hip roof. All of the other applications that we've reviewed, in which there have been six since we adopted the ordinance, in all of the other applications, they've either been on a flat roof, like for a commercial or industrial building, or on a roof where they could meet, meet those proportions. It was not a hip, so you didn't have the angles involved, correct. So this is the, the first time that we've looked at this particular application. They made application in May and this is what came in. The panels are in a stepped configuration. And just what I mean by that is you don't have anything to fill in here. They're just a basic number of panels and you have this design. We identified that from a staff perspective, we would not be able to approve that because it didn't match the shape and proportion of the roof. And what we had indicated is, as an alternative, this was the array very similar to what planning commission and council looked at when we were developing the ordinance. There are some other alternatives that the ordinance allows also. If they had building integrated type of solar installations, meaning solar shingles, other types of film, those types of things would also be allowed. But in terms of if you're looking at solar panels, it needs to meet the shape and proportion section. After talking with the applicant, they had identified that they would be able to do what we call dummy models or faux panels. This was something that the contractor said that they would do. The building permit then was issued based on this plan, which shows these triangular fake units, if you will, made the same way as the other panels. They just would not be plugged into the system, but they would look, they would look like the other panels. At the end of July, then, the contractor submitted an email to the city and they indicated that, that they were not able to find a company to just manufacture these types of panels. And in order to prepare or get the faux panels, they would be nine hundred dollars each for a total cost of thirty-six hundred dollars. And the contractor did not want to pursue the conditional use permit process. They did not want to pursue amending the ordinance at the time. So their basic options were to either construct the array as per the approved building permit plans that they had submitted. They could do nothing and then code enforcement would ensue at the time that the building permit is, is, excuse me, expires. They could apply for a conditional use permit, in which we are going through this evening. They could also make application to amend the ordinance. One of the things that the planning commission wanted when the ordinance was adopted was to take a look at the ordinance in a year, which would be March of twenty seventeen, just to see how things were working, if there were any issues and if there needs to be any adjustments made to the ordinance. So that will be on your work plan for twenty seventeen to take a look at the ordinance. The picture before you shows what the installation looks like. They did install the rails, which are the mounting rails for the solar panels, but they are in this stepped design. This shows both the home and the, and the garage with the panels. This is just a front view of the same. And this is what the, the garage existing installation is. The applicant wanted to, to address the city council on this matter. Their belief is that the panels don't exist, they're not readily available. It's too expensive to look at an alternative, so they had requested council to approve their installation. At the work session, the council basically advised the applicant that the route they should take is to follow the ordinance and go through the conditional use permit process. They did discuss this quite at length with the applicant. The, there were a couple of council members that were able to pull up information on triangular panels at the meeting. The mayor had identified that she has seen these installed in the country on the east and west coast and also in other foreign countries. And the consensus of the council was that they wanted to work with the applicant to allow them to complete their installation, if you will, so that they could hook up to the utility promptly this year and to fast-track the conditional use permit process to the extent we could. And they also agreed to lower their development review escrow from the standard five thousand dollars to one thousand dollars. The direction from the council was that they felt that it be important for the applicant to meet the ordinance. However, they did understand that with the review that the planning commission will do of the ordinance, it may change before next spring. The applicant identified that they'd be willing to work with staff and to meet whatever the ordinance is in effect of spring of twenty seventeen. Which would mean if the conditional use permit is approved, as recommended, then come June twenty seventeen, the end of June, they would need to comply with the ordinance, which if the ordinance has changed and the stepped panels are permitted, they'll meet it. They would just need to remove those extensive rail, those extra sections. If the ordinance stays as is, then they would need to comply with the ordinance and that would be to put on the rectangular, or excuse me, the triangular faux panels or other panels. And the applicant had agreed to work on that. With that, the recommendation from staff is for the planning commission to recommend the council approve the proposed CUP to allow for alternative solar array design at the subject site, subject to the condition that was identified by council. The solar array shall meet the ordinance standards and remaining triangular solar panels shall be installed or metal support rails shall be removed and the building permit shall be finalled by June thirtieth of twenty seventeen. With that, I can stand for questions. And we do have some additional slides that Commissioner Benke had forwarded and I can bring those up at any time. Other than that, I'll stand for questions.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Garros. I'd like to just spend a moment and clarify the, the timeline process. I make sure I've, I've got this straight in my head. The, the conditional use permit that we are, that is in front of us this evening allows the applicant to wait until we review sometime around March. That's a little, that dates, our work session dates are usually a little squishy as to beginning and end. But, so this conditional use permit does state that the, a, a solution has to be in place by the end of June. And that solution could go in one of two directions, depending on the result of our review. Either A, the, the triangular panels would have to be installed or basically as it states, as it sits today. And so my question to you is, depending on the outcome of the review, the rails extend from the existing panels. And how do we handle, I'm, I'm, I'm not predicting where we're going to land, but if we do land with the layout that's there in our, then how do we handle the exposed rails that are on site today?
The rails, that, those sections of rail beyond the, where the solar panels are, would need to be removed.
And did I, did I miss that?
Yeah, that's, that's how it reads, although I'm struggling with it too.
Okay. I, I, that was my question, I didn't know if that specifically, that, how that was going to work from a timing standpoint. Because we're not asking them to remove it prior to that.
That's correct.
It's just a, it's kind of a, it's, the wording is a little weird from a timing standpoint. And that's usually where we get ourselves in trouble from an interpretation of a time. Okay, thank you, Ms. Garros. Commissioners, you, your questions for staff. Commissioner Levy.
Mr. Chair, thank you. As you point out, the study sessions can be kind of squishy in timeframe. Do we want to put a specific date, June thirtieth, twenty seventeen? Or do we want to say thirty days or sixty days after the, it's decided what it's going to be? I'm, I'm concerned about a specific date that, that leaves it maybe two days to make the change, whatever that is. Because things could slow down on our, on our end.
Good question, Commissioner Levy. I did confer prior to the meeting with Ms. Garros and did we believe that the solar review could happen in the first quarter?
Yes.
And they, they feel comfortable with that? So that's usually where I land with their, if they believe it's, it's doable. And I also am, would be concerned about if it got pushed back. We'd need to give the applicant enough reaction time after it's handled to be able to meet whatever the new ordinance is. So my, I was comfortable, but I had the exact same question, can we make it happen? But it's usually not a big, you know, it could be April, it could be, you know, February, March, April. But that still gives someone, you know, May, June, July.
And from the, as far as the conditional use permit, if the planning commission would feel more comfortable, you know, specifying that it be brought into compliance within thirty or sixty days of, you know, the, when the ordinance is adopted or this date, whichever, whichever occurs. The one thing that I want to be careful of is if you decide not to make any changes, we still need to have a date. And the direction from the council was spring of, of twenty seventeen.
Commissioner Levy, other questions?
Thank you.
Commissioner Workman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Deb. As far as the ordinance reads, is it acceptable with the rails removed?
No.
Just because it doesn't follow the pattern of the roof?
That's correct. Unless the planning commission would recommend approval of the stepped, stepped structure as is. You could also do that as well.
Well.
The intent of the council was, they wanted to see either, if the ordinance changes, then they're okay with that after there's been study and analysis and the ordinance changes. Otherwise, they, they want compliance and that would be either the triangular faux panels are put on. The applicant indicated that they could do that, it's nine hundred dollars a piece to do that. Or they could meet whatever the ordinance is once that's approved.
So just to put this in the perspective, they came in with an application for the solar and staff approved it under the understanding that it would be, that those corners would be fulfilled?
Yes. The applicant said that they would put the triangular panels on, the building permit was approved with that plan. And then they decided.
It started getting expensive?
Yes.
Okay. I will save the rest of my questions for the applicant, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Workman. Commissioners, further questions?
Um, Chair.
Commissioner, say.
Hi, Mr. Chair, thank you very much. Ms. Garros, I'm just wondering how, what, what was the council thinking or their line of thinking when they would not accept what the applicant was proposing and they wanted the, the triangular? What's the reason for that?
Just based, you have the, the minutes and the staff report, I think it was the consensus of the council to work with the applicant. The applicant told them that there are advances in this technology all the time and that they would be able to meet the ordinance by spring of next year and they would work with the city to do that. The council was also cognizant, though, that the ordinance may change. That, that is something, so they are trying to cover all bases, but they wanted, they wanted compliance by the end of spring next year.
That's why the June thirtieth was proposed?
Yes.
I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of the June thirtieth. I worry about the thirty or sixty days after the, the, the solution is arrived at. So I, I prefer the sixty days. I mean, I prefer it in June thirtieth because most times, as Mr. Chair said, this matter can be done the first quarter. And that gives staff and the applicant enough time for June thirtieth.
Thank you, Commissioners, and Commissioner Benke.
Thank you. You knew. I was just reading through the, the report here. Yeah, and does, when the city, when someone comes in for a permit for the solar panels, do we have a kind of handout for them that describes some of this, like we have now created for some of the other planning issues that we, that we're, that we're encouraging in the city?
Yes, we do. We send them basically the information that was reviewed by planning commission and council. We have that in a, in a booklet of what the pluses and minuses are that we're trying to accomplish.
Okay. And then, did, could you offer any observations from why they, at the time, didn't want to pursue the CUP or ordinance change?
Yes, and basically, from my perspective, is they didn't want to pay the money that was associated with the conditional use permit and they did not want to have the time delay.
Okay. I, I sort of gathered some of that from the communications. I was particularly struck with the one from August seventeenth. You know, the real, really the challenge that this, that no one else does this, I guess, bothers me immensely. I think I'll elaborate on that a little later. I too noticed that, that, you know, they did agree to install the panels, whether faux or not. They, they did agree to fill in the corners and that's what caused the permit to be approved.
Correct.
Right? I guess my issue is, well, the current one I'm looking at anyway, is that the rails were installed. But at the time, according to the communications, the, the permit, or I guess that was the electrical permit, hadn't been issued yet. So they were operating in advance of a permit again?
That's correct. They did not, the permit, the building permit had been approved, but they had not picked it up.
Okay.
So it's not issued until it's paid for and picked up. And the work was done prior to that.
Okay. My, my issue with the recommendation, I think, to elaborate on what.
We can, we can have some questions with the applicant. We can, we, we can have some questions with the applicant and we could, we can certainly have that discussion.
I, I do. I think though that there's an element of it that factors in and I sort of want to make him aware of it. If the solar array, I'm, I'm reading from the recommendation right now. Solar array shall meet the ordinance standards and remaining triangular panels shall be installed. Or the metal support rail shall be removed. And to me that says either the ordinance doesn't change and he complies. Or the ordinance changes and the rails are removed. And I, I'm, I'm struck that there's still a third option here where, that he would, that the ordinance wouldn't change and that he would choose not to comply. In which case that's a different situation that doesn't, it's not covered here.
If they choose not to comply with what that is, it would be, if they're basically their permit, um, it would be in code enforcement.
So then, okay, so, so that, that would be the, okay. And I, I'm just looking that, again, that staff has the tools they need to properly handle this. Okay, um, I do have other questions that they can say, they can wait.
I, I like Commissioner Benke, I have a little, I have a couple of concerns about the recommendation and how it's written and how it's from a time standpoint, which I was trying to get to earlier, so. Commissioners, other questions for staff? Okay, at this point, I'd like to have the, ask the applicant to come up and, um, come up to the center podium, sir. Thank you for coming this evening. If you could, we have all the information, but if you could state your name and, and your address for the record, so we have that.
Thank you, Jim. Uh, David Kutter, 1400 West 149th Street in Burnsville, Minnesota.
Once again, thank you very much. Um, typically what we'll do in this situation is I'd like to start with commissioners having questions. Um, and I'll work through, uh, their questions. And then at, uh, at the end, we'll give you a, a chance to give us any other information that really wasn't covered in, in the questions by the commissioners. So, um, Commissioner Workman, you were the first to mention you had a question for the applicant, so I'll let you start.
Mr. Kutter, when you, um, originally got your bid from your contractor, it did include the corner panels?
It did not.
It did not?
It did not, no. Um, what, what I saw in this, just kind of a brief background, uh, planning commission is, the, what I wasn't aware of is the ordinance changed, um, Burnsville passed the ordinance, it, it went into effect in March. I went ahead and started solar in, in April. And, um, when the ordinance was written in Burnsville for the, um, uh, you know, for having triangular, uh, modules is what they're called. They were available in the marketplace, but then they were discontinued over the winter and you couldn't find them. Um, and so I, I, to my knowledge, I, I didn't know about this until getting more involved in after finding out, um, you know, all the stuff going on with the contractor and the city. And then I stepped in and got involved, um, and started going into a lot of the meetings and doing a lot more of, uh, a lot more information searching to see if I could find these triangular faux panels. I mean, I looked all over the place. I looked in Europe. Um, I couldn't even find the right wattage that would match my system, uh, even match the color of it. So we looked at, uh, working with, uh, Deb, we looked at doing, uh, like faux panels. Um, cause in my opinion aesthetically pleasing, I, I want to comply in all aspects. But unfortunately they just, they're not in the marketplace. I knew there would be some new advancements coming down the road. Obviously Tesla just, you know, come up with their solar roof product, solar shingles. It's just going to address this, you know, immensely in the future for homeowners. But those aren't going to be on the market until maybe sometime fourth quarter of, uh, 2017 when they get manufactured by SolarCity out of Buffalo, New York. You know, in the interim, I've looked at, um, many, many solar contractors and companies throughout, um, Minnesota. They all have installed the exact same way with this step pattern, um, another home in, in other cities. But, uh, you know, I got caught with it in this area worth not knowing the aesthetically pleasing corners because I wasn't aware of it until the designs were in place. So that's where, working with, um, my contractor and working with Deb, they were trying to find a way to kind of piece this together, but it was just kind of bad timing. So I know we're going to review it again in March. So what my recommendation is, if there's a way that, you know, I want to comply in any which way I can, but I'm hoping maybe I can just cut the rails. Um, or if there was a magical way that I could find triangular panels that would match, I would, I would go for that route too.
So, and I'm just trying to get as much information as I can on this. When the, when your contractor came to staff for the permit and that, this was after the revelation had been made and the ordinance was passed. Then it was amended to add those corners? Cause originally your concept didn't include those corners?
Right, so I, I didn't come up with the concept. That was all, you know, I had gone, I was going between two different companies. Um, and they were kind of both, you know, were worried about the ordinance, you know. So they are, you're contacting me as a homeowner. Are you aware of the ordinance? Uh, other contractors said he's aware of it. You, you're aware of it? Everybody said they were aware of it. Initially, he submitted the plans to, to the planning commission, to Deb, and it was in that step pattern minus those, um, triangular pieces. Then it came back, um, to the contractor, making him aware, hey, to make this within ordinance, you have to have these aesthetically pleasing pieces. He then went out to a, a door company, um, and got a quote, you know, for maybe some glass pieces that maybe we could put on there. But my concern was again, you know, is this roof rated product? You know, what if there's wind? You know, this, we can't just, you know, take some wood, spray paint it black and cover these corner pieces. It's not going to work. It's not going to be aesthetically pleasing. Um, so my concern is I definitely want to meet that and, um, you know, I, I'm recommending that we just cut the rails and I can, I can get connected on. Cause this is, I have signed agreements with Interconnect, so this will be a community solar garden powering the grid.
All right, thank you for your information. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Workman. Commissioners, other questions? Commissioner Benke.
Yeah.
I'm going to wrangle you back up here.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I need you to stay. I apologize. I was looking for the next, we, I think there's several questions, so. Commissioner Benke.
Thank you. Yeah, I got to admit that in reading through the background, I was rather disappointed and frustrated with your contractor.
I was too.
My struggle is we spent quite a bit of time discussing the whys of this. And the real, I think the real problem here is that if this wasn't inter, if this was integrated, you wouldn't have a problem.
Right.
It's the fact that they gave you a system, sold you a system that goes on the roof where the problem is.
What do you mean, what do you mean integrated? What do you mean like?
Deb, you got a couple of those? Okay, you brought up the biggest one. And, you know, Tesla, this is integrated. If you look at the screen.
Oh, right, yeah.
This is integrated. And if you want to go to the next one, Deb, that, this is Tesla. This is SolarCity and it basically, there is no visible change.
Right, and that's not out yet.
Uh, they're, they've got some and it's starting in Australia and not here. And I get that part. But if you want to move to the, this one is here and your type is in the back and integrated is in front. I'm not saying that you have to change to what's here. I'm just saying that when we set this up, we distinguished between integrated and non-integrated. And the goal was to try and make the non-integrated as aesthetically pleasing as possible because integrated is so much more.
Right, and my roof is brand new.
Right, right. And I, there's going to be all kinds of reasons individually and I get that. I'm more talking about where we were coming from when we set it up. You know, yours also faces the street. You know, obviously if it faced the backyard, we might have, some of us might have different opinions and things like that as well. But I basically just wanted to sort of clarify the difference that, you know, the, the, the surface mounted and the integrated, we distinguished between them distinctly. So. So, so your contractor originally thought that he, he could just create something metal or, or glass to, to fill in?
Uh, no, what, what he did is he designed the system based on, you know, what any other company in town would, would design the system. Um, which is, you know, it's in a step pattern similar to what we have at the transit station with our, the modules there. It's, it's, it's what was available in the marketplace right now. Um, and so he, he designed it that way. Um, and then he came back with, um, our city came back with saying we should have the corner pieces and that's where the discussion came in to figure out how to do that.
I'm sorry, Deb, the, the image from our, from the package and that we went back through, um, back to the, yeah. There. I mean, when we, when we got this, I mean, there's a source right there, SPG Solar. And, I mean, I'm just, and again, it's not necessarily the, the, the source that your guy has. But, you know, again, we base this on information that we were given at the time that.
Right.
That, and, and this was the character that we were looking for, for, um, non-integrated installations.
And I agree with you 110%. It's just, I, I looked, we can't find that. I mean, it's, it, if it's there, I would, I would purchase it.
Well, it, it might not conform to what his installation is, which is the hard part. I, I realize that, Jim, yeah. So, okay. So if, so if, if we go through the CUP, uh, in March and we decide not to change it, you'd be fine pursuing something to, to make the system comply?
Well, I mean, the system is ready to be turned on, uh, right now. I mean, I'm recommending we just cut the rails. And then that way it, you know, it would function, um, it would still look and match the hip roof line. You know, if there was, uh, some corner pieces that come on the market and the city council and planning commission review it and they make it available and they send it to me, I will, I will gladly install those in.
Thank you.
Commissioners, other questions of the applicant? Commissioner Workman.
Where are the $900 panels coming from?
Uh, that was just an estimate that my contractor had got from a door company.
So that wasn't for an actual faux panel or an actual solar panel? That was for?
That was for, yeah, it was for like a faux panel from a door company to kind of maybe make some sort of a glass looking thing to, you know, make it work.
So that wasn't part of a, that wasn't from a, a solar company that produces panels?
No, I, I looked at many solar companies.
Okay.
I just don't think spray painting wood would look right on the corners. I just, we should just cut the rails.
Um, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Benke touched on this, so I kind of like to kind of pull together. I hope you understand, we spent a tremendous amount of time trying to get ahead of this. So this is, uh, a situation where we had multiple meetings. And to Commissioner Benke's point, we tried to, uh, distinguish between whether it was, if the applicant is, if it's integrated into the roof, there's these standards and trying to think ahead of it. And I, I want you to know that I, I think that, um, this is probably our best option from the standpoint of, I know the council reduced the CUP price for you. This gives us the option and we did plan on this in advance. We, we did believe that stuff could change and technology could change at a rapid pace. Cause I'll be honest with you, the technology changed while we were looking at it.
Yeah, I know.
And, uh, so our, our plan was to be as, um, understanding as we could be and say, okay, we, here's our ordinance. We've looked at this. What are our expectations? What the community is going to see? And then in a year, we're going to review it. So that, you know, we kind of leap forward to today. And we have, you know, some issues where I, I truly believe your contractor may have led you astray. And I would tell you, it's, it's very frustrating for myself and people on the commission to, um, have contractors that have contractors license that understand to hold their license, they need to apply with an application with a city. We're not any different. Some cities have different rules and regulations, but the, the path every city follows is a licensed contractor needs to apply for an application. And they need to pick that application up, uh, and pay for it prior to starting the work. And I, and I completely understand the situation you're in. And we can sit up here and tell you that panels can be found, but panels may not be able to be found for your application. So I understand that too. The, the, the CUP in my mind, looking at it, was our best option because A, it does give you a bit of a reprieve. It gives you the ability for us to look at it. Uh, it will take staff time and they'll have to research. And we don't know what staff will come back to us with, but that's the process we've always followed. I, I do appreciate your request, uh, from a standpoint of sometime in, in how we, you know, can we get you to say you'll come back and do something? I'll, I'll tell you that we probably won't land there. We're going to have some discussion here in a little bit, but that also puts the city in a bad situation of no different than any other application that we have for any other thing that comes in front of us. If it, if it isn't kind of clean and definable by date, uh, and actions, uh, we can kind of get ourselves in trouble. So, um, I do appreciate the situation you're in and I appreciate you coming and talking to us this evening. So, um, if you have anything else you'd like to tell us, then I will, um, have you sit down. We'll have a, uh, open the public hearing to see if anybody has any comments and then we'll finalize our discussion.
Yeah, the only, um, the only consider, consideration I was looking for is just, um, I definitely wanted to, you know, I can see where it got kind of caught where the ordinance passed. There was a winter that ordinance went into effect in, in March. I, I had then installed in April, the technology wasn't there and we just kind of got caught. So we are doing it very progressively in the city, which, you know, we're right on for doing that. It, we just kind of, I just kind of got caught right in the middle of that transitional change. So I'm just hoping for, um, consideration to just, you know, cut the rails, get connected and, um, get it online or whatever the, uh, planning commission so deems fit. I think you.
Okay, thank you very much. I think I'll, so I don't forget it, I'm going to have the public hearing and then we'll have discussion. This application does require a public hearing and I would like to open the public hearing at this time and ask anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this item to step up to the podium and give us your thoughts. Seeing no one that would like to speak to the public hearing, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, uh, further discussion and questions for staff? I, I do have a couple of questions. I guess I'd like to clarify and then we'll, Ms. Garros. The applicant made several comments about, um, go ahead and getting it hooked to the grid. And, um, so help me understand the, the timeline going forward. With the conditional use permit, I was under the impression, and I could have been incorrect, that the applicant can go ahead and have it function. But it is just essentially non-conforming at this point, um, up until June 30th. So it could be hooked to the grid, it could be functioning, it could be generating electricity. It would just be non-conforming as the array is set. And then we would follow the process of, um, the, um, review with the city. Once the review of the city is complete, then we kind of have a, a fork in the road. Either A, um, it's compliant, uh, and the applicant is ready to go. B is that the, um, it, it needs to be brought into compliance so that some sort of panel is, makes it fit our, our ordinance. Or I guess at the ugly end of the continuum, it has to be removed if there's some sort of issue with code compliance. Am I, um, am I kind of summarizing that appropriately?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
The other alternative, um, for the commission that you could do, you could, um, recommend that the, uh, array as it sits be approved subject to removing the rails.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Garros. Uh, commissioners, I'd like to, we'll start with Commissioner Levy.
Ms. Garros, thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Garros, could you put up that slide again of the, um, the, the one that's the roof panels in the front? And then it's got the added one, uh, behind it, integrated versus the, uh.
The one that Commissioner Benke provided for us.
And then there's one more.
One more?
There you go, yeah. Okay, what we, what I see there is a gabled roof application and a, um, hip roof application. The hip roof application has the same problem that we're talking about. I think the previous slide showed a, a integrated one on a hip roof. Trying to keep these things straight.
Yeah, actually, I, I think I know what Steve's going for here. This has a valley which functions similar to, yep, it's.
Right, and we've got multiple steps. It happens to be smaller steps, but there's multiple steps, uh, that allow it to at least somewhat follow the contour. I don't see a problem with the applicant as got it now. I think that's just fine, in my opinion.
Okay, Mr. Commissioner Levy, any other comments?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, commissioners, other comments? Commissioner Workman? Thank you very much. Commissioners, other comments? Commissioner Workman?
My struggle comes from how much time is invested in this ordinance and why it's there in the first place. Everybody's going to have a different story when we have problems like this, but I think the point, why it was integrated was to avoid a scenario where we're dealing with right now. And so if this one defies the ordinance, then it almost seems like the ordinance doesn't, or that piece of the ordinance doesn't serve a purpose in the first place. So I guess I'm just thinking out loud and saying that and I'm looking for, I don't know. I, I'm not totally sure how to perceive this particular item right now.
I guess I'd like to clarify a comment there and Ms. Garros, tell me if I'm stating correctly. To Mr. Commissioner Benke's original point, we, we did not, if the, if it was integrated into the roof, we did not make any restrictions as to how the array was laid out.
Correct.
The, we did make restrictions that if it is a surfaced mounted system, then to structure it appropriately from an aesthetic standpoint, that is when we required the non-stairstep look. And that's the difference to Commissioner Levy's point about the stairstep in this picture and to Commissioner Workman's point about how this, how they vary. And I, I think, I think we've, I want to make sure everyone understands the differences in where we landed. Correct?
That is correct. This photo shows basically a panel system that's considered to be building-integrated. It's not specific solar panels. They're solar shingles or another similar application and that's what, this is another application. And the ordinance was set up so that if you had an application like this or this or what you see on the right, that you could just, you could just do that. The permit would be issued. But when you have a solar panel, like that is shown on the left, at that point, they need to be, meet the shape and proportion of the roof.
Commissioner, Commissioner Workman, other, other questions?
Well, and that was what Ms. Garros just said was what was worked on in the solar ordinance, correct? And that was, that was what we, I came a little bit late to that party, but that was why when we, we decided that for the aesthetics, aesthetics purposes that needed to go with the contour of the roof, if it's going to be a traditional solar. And we, I mean, we didn't really discuss anything. If, if not, why? Okay, well, here's an option. Why? It was just, this is what we've decided it will be. And the council passed it and that's what it's been. So I, I'm done thinking out loud, so thank you.
Commissioner Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, you worked with us, we spent quite a bit of time. And one of the things that we talked about was how if, when we install panels, how it looks, how neighbors see it. Have we made any contact with neighbors? Ms. Garros, let them know what was being planned or did you have any objection or, or in approval?
With this application, property owners within 350 feet of the boundary of the property were notified. We did not receive any comments or emails on this.
Okay. Well, you know, as I said, we spent a lot of time talking about how this thing looks and, and again, it's facing the street. I mean, you pass on the street, you look at it, doesn't look, look good. I mean, I wouldn't want to live next door to it and having to see it every day. We spent a lot of time talking about it when we were working on the ordinance and I think, I agree, Commissioner Workman, I think we need to, I mean, we need to follow our own recommendations. So I, I, I'm not in favor of what Mr. Kutcher has now. You had mentioned a fourth option. Can you repeat that one for me?
Certainly. The, when the ordinance was put into effect, we did add the conditional use permit clause to allow different types of designs to be considered. And those would be reviewed then by planning commission and council and you could take a look at the specific case and circumstances and recommend approval of a conditional use permit for that. Staff is not able to do that administratively. This is very similar to an applicant that wants a fence taller than eight feet. There's a provision that they can file a conditional use permit. You review it. Same thing with a metal roof and single family. That would be a conditional use permit for planning commission and council to consider. So it, it's, it's within your purview if, as part of this conditional use permit application, if you want to recommend approval of the current layout, you know, say, subject to removal of the excess mounting bars, you certainly could do that.
So, so we can recommend that with, with the current array and the remover of the, of the rails, we can recommend that subject to what happens when we revisit the ordinance first quarter next year? So that he can hook up and because he would, he would know, the applicant would know if, if things change and he has to remove it, then that, that he will have to comply.
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Levy, let me see if I get everyone else. Commissioner, okay, Commissioner Levy.
Isn't that what the condition already says? Or am I misreading the condition? As of June 30th, you could, you know, you can cut the rails and everything is, and he's fine. Isn't that, or am I misreading that?
I think that assumes that we're going to modify the ordinance, correct?
That, that gets back to my timing question as we go forward here, but I just wanted to have some discussion. When we're, when we're done here, I'd like to land on, make sure if we go forward with this, that we're all comfortable with the recommendation and how it's written. But I wanted to get everyone's discussion on the table first.
Well, and we can't, I don't, we don't want to...
Commissioner Workman.
I'm sorry. We can't predict the future, but this assumes that we're going to modify the ordinance to allow this stepped pattern. We don't know for sure.
We don't know that. Correct.
But that's a chance you'd be taking.
But then wouldn't we be doing the applicant a disservice by saying, okay, wait till June 30th and then the opportunity exists that we wouldn't modify that and it was...
Commissioner, why don't we just stick to your comments and then we'll move through the commissioners? Commissioner Singh, did you have other comments?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Benke, your thoughts?
Okay, I'm going to talk about two different things here. One is, one is Mr. Kutcher's installation. I think that the biggest issue I have with it is it specifically fits, in my opinion, the category of installation that I felt that the industry would, would be moving away from. And because of that, we wanted to hold it to the higher standard. Because when, Deb, if you could go to the better ones? Yeah, the newer ones. When, when you go to what, where the industry is going, you get an installation that is more integrated. I mean, to the point where in three or five or eight years, you know, I mean, we don't have, we don't have cement tile roofs here, which the one on the right is, but you could put them on. They're a California roof, but you can buy them here and put them on if you wanted to spend the money for them. What I'm getting at is that the industry is moving toward a more aesthetic product. And then when I look at what Mr. Kutcher has right now, it, to me, was what I specifically in my, in my conversations with everybody during the discussion, was trying to keep from happening. Was trying to keep from going backward to what we used to do. That, you know, it basically, it slapped on the roof. Slapped on the roof. And it doesn't look integrated. It doesn't look, and unfortunately, Mr. Kutcher has a hip roof. And that, that, you know, in spite of, you know, other than that, if he had a rectangular roof, a standard gable roof, and he'd have a gable pattern, then he wouldn't have this issue. He does have a hip roof and he did want to put panels on the roof. He was given the paperwork, his contractor was given the paperwork. They, you know, given the communications, the contractor clearly disagreed with the ordinance and chose to continue, even to the point of starting installation without permit. You know, I mean, being in the industry of construction, I, it befuddles me anytime someone goes outside of it, as the chair talked about too. It's, the, the rules are the same for everybody. Now, nothing happened here from a life safety standpoint, from the, from the building permit. You know, nothing is really going to happen from an electrical permit. Those are really details. But just the fact that he continued to move forward and continued to move forward and essentially boxed his client into a corner bothers me to no end. But yet we're still stuck that we, we were, in my mind, we were trying to avoid this kind of installation specifically. And the fact that it's on the front of the house, to me, makes it harder yet. Now, with the recommendation, I'm, I'm, you know, as I read through it, I'm, I'm fine with the recommendation that the panels be installed, assuming that they could be installed, just done, and he, and he could close out his permit. If, if he leaves the rails to June 30th and waits for us to talk about the ordinance again and make a decision about it, yes, he's taking a chance, but he's buying into that at this point because he's agreeing with it. I personally, you know, I don't know where I'll be in, in March, but I think you guys probably have a better idea right now where I'll be in March. I mean, I know where I'll be in March on this subject. But in the meantime, you know, what, you know, leaving him hanging bothers me to no end. I, I do agree that getting him connected is, is a good idea in spite of all the other things the contractor did, but yet, at what point, at what point should he really be looking for a solution here? The triangular solution? You know, I mean, in my mind, if it was me, I'd be looking right now, still. I, I found, I found one in, in England because there's a lot of hip roofs in England. Again, not that it matches his particular installations, connections, power and everything else, but they are still out there. I found two other solutions here that could work, but I don't want to elaborate on that. I'm not here to design it for him. I'm trying to look at this, this recommendation and, you know, I think from the city council presenting it to, to him and to us, I, I think it is a good solution. That he does get to start his system up. He does get to use it. He does get to start to benefit from it. In the meantime, he's, he looks for a panel that can make it comply and, you know, we, we talk about it in March. So...
Thank you.
Did I come to a conclusion there?
Yes, I think you did. Ms. Garros, I, so to kind of bring the conversation to a close and, you know, sometimes I don't come by this stuff very easily, so I'm going to look for your recommendation. You've heard, you've heard many comments from the commissioners this evening. I have not heard from Commissioner Walter yet, but do you have, you have any input?
Yeah, I do. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate your asking. I, you know, I wasn't here during the solar ordinance, so I came to, I didn't come to the party at all. So this is kind of my first exposure to it, so I've been trying to digest this and, and understand it. And it's clear to me that it is an evolving sector, so to speak, in the technology. And Commissioner Benke, I appreciate the, the additional information that you provided here today. I, to me, the other issue, you know, I think when you're looking at solar energy too, there is, there is a certain higher good factor that, that needs to come into the consideration too. This is not a, you know, it's not a swimming pool or, or some such thing like that. You know, the, the applicant is not doing this to, you know, for, for, you know, anything other than altruistic reasons too. So to me, that, that, that says that we need to try to work, work with them on, on this stuff. And I completely agree with the other commissioners in terms of the importance of sticking with the ordinance. We have ordinances for a reason. You don't just have them and then add pencil sketches to everything to, as you go. But, but I think that's why what we've got before us right now is a good compromise so that we can get, so he can get this project rolling and we can revisit this, which we're going to be doing anyway. So that was a long way of saying I support this.
Thank you, Commissioner Wal. So, Ms. Garros, we've heard everyone's comments this evening and so let's, the, the thing that I just need to be assured from staff is that let's fast forward to March. And I don't want to have led anybody down a wrong path or that, that, that we have an appropriate process come the 1st of April. And we clarified earlier that if this ordinance, as stated today, if we approve it and if it goes to the city council and if the city council approves it, so there's a lot of ifs, the applicant after November 23rd could essentially hook the system up as it is today and could function November, December, January, February, March. Then at the 1st of April, the, we will have hopefully made a decision. And help me with then, is this ordinance, is this recommendation written comfortably enough from staff that we have kind of appropriately handled anything that could come in our direction? If the, if we decide to, to leave the ordinance, then the applicant has one direction to go. If we decide to change the ordinance, the applicant has another direction to go. Or at that point, if the applicant still wants to come back to us and say, okay, the ordinance did not change, is that a separate application for the applicant? The thing I can't get my hand around is how do we handle that step, I guess is my question.
What, what the commission, what the commission could do is indicate, I mean, the permit is open. They have got this permit and it's valid for a period of time. You could recommend that the applicant be allowed in the interim to hook up to the utility company with everything stays as it is. Come June 30th of 2017, they will need to comply with the ordinance, whatever is in effect at that time.
Chair? Is that, okay.
I just want to comment.
Okay.
Do we need to include hook up, it will be non-conforming?
You can include that.
I mean, they're going to make it clear until the planning commission makes a recommendation and the city council come to a resolution on this matter.
And so to Commissioner Singh's point, we, we may need your assistance here in a little bit with the recommendation and appropriate wording. Correct, Commissioner Singh?
Yep. We can plug that in.
Other comments? Commissioner Levy?
I'm still concerned June 30th. The ordinance doesn't change and we've got a non-compliant situation that, and compatible, I'm going to say compatible solar panels cannot be found. Maybe they come from England, but they look totally different and that is worse. Fall panels might look the same. I'd be concerned about their durability. The homeowner is left out on a limb. He can't, he's not in compliance. There is no reasonable way for him to comply. What happens?
Commissioner Levy, my point, at, at this point, if this was my application, I would be preparing for both ends of the continuum. I'm going to be preparing for, depending on if, if the, if the ordinance does not change, what is my option? Because the applicant has from November 23rd until June 23rd truly to implement a solution. He just doesn't know what the solution's going to be until the end of March. And I think we've been upfront that it could land on both sides, you know. And so if I was the applicant, I would start down the path with my contractor is, it, it could land here or it could land there. And then we're appropriately giving them the time to, it's not that, if the applicant waits until we change or we address the ordinance, that's probably the applicant's fault from a standpoint of getting ahead.
I'm not concerned about that, the applicant waiting. I'm sure he's going to do something. My question, my concern is that come June 30th, there's nothing reasonable to comply.
Okay. Thank you very much. Commissioner Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to draw Commissioner Levy's attention to the condition. The condition is not giving him The condition is not giving him permanent, permanent approval of whatever he has there now. He says the solar array shall meet the ordinance standards, and the remaining triangular solar panels shall be installed. He doesn't have triangular there now. So he just temporarily thinks he's getting temporary approval, so it's non confirming.
Commissioner Singh, other comments?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Benke?
Yeah, I'm, I'm still looking at the recommendation.
At that point, I'd like to, I'd like to move to, Deb, could you help us with a recommendation that kind of spins together what we've talked from a standpoint that you spoke earlier in reference to the recommendation from, that you mentioned earlier? Can you repeat that?
I think.
Sorry.
There's a number of things you're trying to accomplish here. Number one, we're trying to allow the applicant to hook up to the grid, to let him do that on an interim basis. So I think you could state that in your recommendation.
Okay, can we, but I was under the impression that as it's stated today, the applicant could go ahead and do that, so is it, is that actually needed?
Well, I'm trying to, if you want to be, depending on how detailed you want to be, I think you should make it clear. So, yes, you know, this recommend approval to allow the applicant to hook into the system as the array is designed today, subject to them meeting the ordinance in effect as of...
June 30th.
Yes. The applicant can always request the city council for an extension, you know, addressing Commissioner Levy's, you know, question, what if the ordinance takes longer? You know, they can request the council to grant an additional amount of time for the ordinance to be completed.
The applicant can reach out to the city council without additional applications to extend that date?
Correct.
Okay. Good point, Commissioner Levy. Other questions? Mr. Commissioner Levy, are you, or Commissioner Benke, are you, sorry?
I'm trying to break this, this recommendation down into smaller pieces. I think that might make it a little easier for us. I would say, number one, the solar array shall meet the ordinance standards, and the array may be allowed to connect to the grid, or something very close to that. The second one is the remaining solar panels shall be installed to comply with the current ordinance by June 30th, 2017. And the third one would be, no, let me back up a second here. The second one would be the remaining triangular solar panels, the remaining triangular panels, not solar, shall be installed, or the metal rails, or this, or the installation needs to meet the ordinance as of, as written as of April 15th, 2017, for lack of a better date to throw out there right this second. Essentially, you know, not telling them that the rails should be removed, because at this point, that part, I think, is, might be what's causing some of the confusion. I mean, you know, I, personally, I think the goal is to meet the standard as it currently exists, because that's what currently exists, and then whatever happens in March or April, you know, it's subject to, it's, you know, at that point, you know, his CUP could be revisited, not formally here, but he can comply with what the ordinance is at that time. And does anything need to be written for that?
Could, could we, could we simplify the process to, the applicant shall be, and help me with the wording, the applicant shall be allowed to temporarily hook the system up to the grid? And then, number two, to Commissioner Benke's point, we simplify this. The solar array shall meet the standard of the ordinance in place at, as of June 30th, 2017. Very simply, we're not, we're eliminating all of the other things.
Yep.
We're just saying that the, that the applicant needs to meet the ordinance in place as of, so A, we're giving the applicant the ability to hook the grid up today. Number two, we're rewriting that, and we're removing this and simplifying it from the standpoint that they simply need to meet the ordinance in place as of June 30th. How does staff feel about that?
I think that that's workable.
Okay. With the caveat that at some point, that he does have the opportunity to extend that deadline via an application to the, or a request to the city council. Commissioner Levy?
And, thank you, Mr. Chair, and the scenario that the ordinance is changed, I don't see anything in which you're suggesting that he has to remove the rails. I would assume that the rails have to go.
The ordinance is pretty specific, it does not allow those rails to be on there, that's why I'm trying to tie back to.
Okay, it's already in the ordinance?
Yeah. So we're simply saying that the applicant needs to meet the ordinance in place at that time, and that's going to deal with the rails and everything.
I didn't wear that detail in the ordinance. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Levy, I think it's that the ordinance doesn't allow, I mean, it doesn't specifically say you can't have rails, it's simply, you're looking at the panels, and the panel is what's allowed.
Yes.
To be exposed. Sorry, guys, one little piece here. When, when we were doing this before, it wasn't specifically just for PV panels, voltages, it was for any kind of solar panel. So, hot water, hot air, any of those kinds of things could also be in this situation. And, you know, that was, you know, so just keep in mind, it wasn't just for PV panels.
Commissioners would be, I would entertain, I guess at this point, I'd like to move the meeting forward and entertain a motion. Who, is someone willing to move this forward? Commissioner Singh?
Oh, I'm trying to figure how I bring in what Commissioner Benke was saying there. I mean, the first part of the recommendation is fine, but the condition is where we need to do the wordsmith.
Well, you could have Ms. Garros state that, Commissioner Singh, and see if you're comfortable with it.
I'll do it, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I moved that the planning commission recommended the city council approval of the proposed CUP for the alternative solar area design at 140149 Street West, subject to the following conditions. What we have there is one, but Ms. Garros, you will help us with the wordsmithing of that, right?
Yes. I think, if I could interject, Mr. Benke makes a very good point that it could apply to other systems. This is specific to this application.
Right.
So I think we're okay with the conditions for this specific application, but when we look at the ordinance, we'll need to be more broad.
Right.
We have a, we have a motion on the floor, do I have a...
Could Deb recite back what she thinks we've said?
So, the, the recommendation is to approve the CUP for the alternative design, subject to the following conditions. One, the applicant shall be allowed to hook into the system for the grid, and two, that the solar array shall meet the ordinance in place as of June 30th, 2017.
I support that, Mr. Chair, as the mover.
We have a motion on the floor, do I, we have a second by Commissioner Walter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Aye.
And the motion carries. That'll go in front of the city.
That was a four, yep.
I'm sorry, you had the division, okay.
It wasn't divided, I was, I was asleep.
Oh, okay. That application will go in front of the city council on November 22nd. Thank you very much. That takes us to the fifth item on our agenda this evening. The fifth item is also a public hearing. It's an application of Eleven Investments LLC for a planned unit development amendment to allow personal services and medical clinics and services in addition to small office use within three buildings at 13754, 13770, and 13786. Ms. Garros is presenting this evening, thank you, Ms. Garros, we are very familiar with this property.
Thank you, members of the commission. We have had several applications dealing with various uses within different buildings at this site. The property is located north of McAndrews Road and is located west of Frontier Court. There was a planned unit development that was approved in 1997 that identifies, it's fairly restrictive in the uses. It was basically a negotiated project, negotiated with a lot of work with the developer, with the city, with neighbors, and, and the property owners, and the intent of that PUD was to allow small offices, if you will. And the subject site is constrained, it's constrained, there's not an ability to expand the parking lot, with the exception of possibly an additional three or four spaces. The, there are existing drainage and utility easements, basically around the entire site. So we have a constrained site, and the, when this project was approved, the intent was to have smaller businesses that would have limited impact on the adjacent neighborhoods and adjacent uses. There were concerns, and still are, about traffic and transportation to the site. As you see on the aerial photo, on the right-hand side, there is only one driveway access to this property for the three buildings, and there are also natural resource considerations. So, within all of these, basically, as I indicated, the uses allowed at the time were intended to be small business. What's happened since then is the city has changed the definitions for various uses in the zoning ordinance, which had unintended consequences for this project. At the time, when, in 1997, when this is approved, what is termed today as a personal service or a medical type of use, chiropractor, small doctor's office, hair salon, those types of things could all go in that planned unit development under the office definition at the time. In 2012 and 2014, the ordinance, for totally different reasons, not even considering this particular site, we had modified definitions to add specific definitions for personal services and also for medical clinics. And so what happens is, today, even though there has been, say, a chiropractor or a small medical clinic in this office complex in the past, because the ordinance definitions have changed, we have to always deal with the ordinance that's in effect at the time. So what needs to happen is, when these other uses come in, if they aren't part of the office definition, the tenants have had to make application to amend the PUD for the specific uses. The most recent amendment that was made was earlier this summer, and we did approve a PUD amendment for the, I believe it was the 13786 building, the most southerly building, to have a medical esthetician and also a separate hair salon business. Because it's a planned unit development, those specific floor plans and the business operations for those uses became part of the approval for the site. The property owner was contacted by another individual, her name is Patty Rieger, who was interested in moving into the same building and occupying a very small 540 square foot space. The business would be known as Skinfinity, and it falls under both personal services and because they do have a doctor, a medical doctor involved, also falls under the medical clinic, medical services definition. So we have two different things. So rather than make application, again, just for that specific use, the manager, or the ownership company worked with staff, and they want to make application so that within all three buildings, the same types of small office type businesses that were originally contemplated can continue to go in there without individually having to come in for planned unit development for each application. So what the proposal is, is to open the definition, if you will, for the uses, to follow the zoning ordinance definition, to allow, in addition to office, medical services and clinics, and also personal services. For the Skinfinity Med Spa, they're looking at one suite, as I said, very small, they're looking to have approximately eight to 10 patients a day. There will be one employee, and then also, under the supervision of a medical doctor, and they will perform all sorts of different skin-related laser therapies and very similar types of applications as the medical esthetician that was approved earlier this year, a little bit different because they do have a doctor involved, so fall into those two categories. The hours of operation proposed are Monday and Tuesday from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Wednesdays 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Thursday and Friday 8 o'clock to 4:00 PM, and some Saturdays by appointment only. Because there are only two people, and it's more of a customer or appointment-based operation, the impacts to the parking are very limited, and the type of use is in line with the other uses that are in the existing building and other buildings on site. The definitions we did provide for you in your background report, but for the information for the public, personal services, what does that mean? Those are consumer convenient services offered for compensation, including a hair salon, beauty barber shops, body art, facial care, pedicures, massage business, however, massage businesses are also subject to licensing requirements of the city, manicures, laundry dry cleaning pickup station, and incidental processing or repair, clothing alterations, those types of things, again, very small types of businesses. The medical service or clinic is a facility for the practice of medicine, mental health, chiropractic services, dentistry for humans, including diagnostic laboratories, medical counseling services, but not including inpatient or overnight care at the site, or operating rooms for major surgery. Then the office definition that is in place is basically a building or portion thereof where services are performed involving predominantly administrative, professional, clerical operations, and where goods are not produced, sold or repaired or warehoused. For the subject site, what you're looking at is the site plan that was originally approved in 1997 for the project, and the reason that we bring this up, we did note this in the last application, but the site plan here specifically shows that at the time of the '97 approval, there were three small trash enclosures that were proposed, and the plans show on the bottom right what the trash enclosures were to look like. They were to be located by each building, there's one in this location proposed, one in this location, and one in this location. Currently, there is not a trash enclosure on the property, and what staff had recommended in the previous application is that, we did recommend a condition that was approved for an enclosure to be installed, and with this application, we're recommending a condition, but actually a drop dead date for that to be installed, which would be basically give the, the applicant a year to construct a trash enclosure, meeting the ordinance requirements. On this plan, the only reason that I show you this is that in this area of the site, just north of Building 2 or right in between here, when this plan was approved, these were additional parking spaces, and this is currently where the trash is collected in a dumpster and stored on the site. So we do have information on where these various parking spaces would be. We can get into the details of all of the previous PUDs that have been reviewed. What, what staff is recommending, and we feel are benefits of this PUD, is that it allows additional flexibility for the property owner to market the three buildings in the same manner that they originally had approved in 1997, before the city changed our ordinance definitions, that the proposed med spa that they are talking about will bring a new tenant to a previously vacant space, and it is something that is very consistent with other uses within the development, and the PUD amendment will allow additional businesses to occupy the site. With this, there are a couple of conditions that are proposed. As I indicated, the site is con... As I indicated, the site is constrained with regard to parking. And a medical clinic or service, for example, it could have a large clinic, it could have a small clinic in between, the same could be said for some of these other uses. In order to control that or constrain that, one of the conditions suggested is that all parking generated for all of the uses on the site needs to be provided for on-site. In the event that they would get an application that needed additional parking or alternative parking for more vehicles or something of that sort, you'd need to come in for a PUD amendment for that. And then we would do the traffic analysis and take a look at it and, and much more in-depth review. So that would be one element, one condition that is recommended. Another condition is that all of the previous PUD and conditional use permit approvals would remain in full force and effect. Third, that if they have additional sign permits, or excuse me, additional exterior signs, they need to apply for the appropriate sign permits in order to install anything else on the exterior. And the last one would be that new trash enclosure, meeting the ordinance, be installed no later than November of 2017. And with that, I will be available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Garros. As I stated, I think everybody here is very familiar with the property. And number, a couple, I have a couple of questions and a couple of statements. I am, I'm excited that the building owner is finally had the application in front of us, because we have struggled with the trash enclosures. And I think we all have personally struggled in instances where we have an applicant that was forced to come in for a permit, and we really had no way of holding them accountable to fix a building or to create a trash enclosure. So I'm excited that we're going to handle that. It's good that we're not going to have individual applications for every single suite in all three buildings. I, you know, we've all spent a fair amount of time with the neighborhood, and I'd like to make sure that, a couple of things. I'm excited about the parking limitation, because one of my initial concerns was with medical services, that A, one building could completely be leased to a Fairview Clinic or something that would then cause more parking issues. And we all have spent enough time with this property to know that it's a very delicate property from the standpoint of that. So I'd just like to clarify that the statement in our background of number four, parking for all uses shall be accommodated. So each, really, we've got a limitation from a higher up from the total property of parking available, and, and so every single thing that's operating there at a time, it's all going to have to be accommodated on-site. If an applicant did come to us that we, the staff believed, or we believed is going to vary from that, then they'd have to come back in front of us, correct?
Yes, that would be a PUD amendment.
I know you stated that, I'd just like to try to get that out. Signage, when we opened this up, I'm assuming the building itself has some limitations on square footage of signage, correct?
Yes, the ordinance does have limitations on the amount of signage that, that you can have. It's based on the percentage of front facades of the building.
Okay. So even though we're opening this up, they, we, the, our sign ordinance wouldn't allow 42 signs all the way around. That's an exaggeration, but five suites per building, we're not going to see some massive amount of signs speckled throughout the building. Our ordinance covers that appropriately with
Yes.
what was originally built, what the sign ordinance is going to allow. Okay. All right, I think that's, answers most of my concerns at this point. Thanks for letting me talk. Commissioner Singh, you raised your hand first.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner is going over the background information on this application. And from what I, I know, and what all of, most of us here know of this property, three things jumped out at me. One was the trash, and I'm glad staff is taking some measures to get the trash enclosure constructed not later than November 14. That's one year we're giving them. And I hope that we don't get complaints from people. If they take a year to put up that trash enclosure, it can cause some concern among people. So trash was one. Two was parking. And I'm glad that we are conditioned for, that all parking shall use the accommodated site. So they are aware of what they're getting. And the third one was traffic, as it would impact the neighbors on the western side of those buildings. But I think none of these, if I am assuming correctly, none of these proposed businesses would attract a large number of vehicles almost at the same time, so.
Correct, that's what is anticipated, with the exception that Commissioner Bradrick had mentioned. If they want a larger area for, say, a medical clinic or a larger salon or something of that sort, and that is going to create the demand for more parking that can be used on site, it comes back to you
Comes back, yes.
for a PUD amendment and review.
I'm excited that this property will be occupied, and, and we don't have to spend too much more time dealing with it. It's good for the owners, and I think it's a very positive move, and I intend to support it.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. Commissioner Benke was next, and I'll get to Commissioner Levy.
Thank you, Chair. I think because we all know so much about this piece, looking at the recommendation specifically, I think is in order, as everybody else has noted. Just to be clear, parking for all uses, that is checked at permit application, correct?
Correct, yes.
The uses compared to what the code, what our ordinance says about parking?
Yes.
So that's where the check comes in?
Yes.
And I wanted to make sure that everybody knew where that happened. In the past, when we've had
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, based around that. So if I understand what Commissioner Benke said correctly, if an applicant comes in and it's based on their square footage of the building at that point, if they're going to, if they're going to take up 10,000 square feet, that's going to dictate the, at that point, the parking?
Correct. Correct. We take a look at what the proposed use is, what the existing uses are in the square footage. There are different parking ratios and calculations based on the type of use, so we take a look at, at that as well. And if at any point they get above the 95 spaces that are existing out there, that would prompt them to have to come in for a PUD amendment.
Okay, thank, I just wanted to, when you were there, I wanted to clarify that.
Right, exactly. And now, just to take that a little farther, keep in mind that some of those same ratios are what's given us the excessive parking in other areas. Now, that's why I think they're, they're saying that if somebody comes in, it comes back to us first, it's not simply a no.
Yeah.
Okay. In other buildings where we've had multiple tenants, there's a sign plan. Is one required here yet?
There is, there would be, yes, for multiple tenants in a building that does, if they want more than, I forget the number of signs, I believe it's more than, than two signs, I think it is, per building, they need to submit a sign plan. I don't recall offhand, I, I'm not sure if they have a sign plan, they probably do, I just don't recall for sure.
Okay, I guess I would love to see that, because I know that in the past, there have been more than two signs on the building facing
That ordinance has changed over time, so.
True, and as this, this whole thing is part of that.
Yes.
Okay, might want to make that, okay. I'm being a little more cynical on the trash enclosure, nothing's happened on it yet, nothing's happened on it with at least two other requirements to build it. This, this PUD doesn't specifically allow this tenant, it, it allows her use, correct?
Correct, the, yes.
So, I mean, so, okay. So having, if, if the, if the trash enclosure doesn't, still doesn't get built for here or more, this tenant's not out, because this is not her approval, this is an approval for the whole building.
That's correct.
Where the previous two applicants, you know, that actually
They were the tenants.
Right. Okay, now, are they grandfathered in under the new rules? Are they then eliminated, you know, does that eliminate the trash enclosure from their approvals?
I believe that in those approvals, we did specify that the property owner
Okay.
was responsible, not the individual tenants.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear, because it's certainly not their task. What is our recourse if they continue to use a dumpster instead of the trash enclosures?
It would be code enforcement.
The fourth one is all remaining COP and PUD approvals remain in force and effect, I don't have a problem with that one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Benke. Commissioner Levy.
Ms. Garros, could you, thank you, Mr. Chair, could you bring back those definitions of the, of the types of tenants or services? The chair mentioned a large clinic, a medical clinic, a Fairview offsite. I'm not sure where the size cutoff is on these.
Where it comes into play would be the square footage, number of employees, et cetera, with a proposed type of use. Could be you have a large salon, same type of thing. That all calculates or comes into play when you're calculating parking, and if you're going to have parking, it's got a, it's, it's limited here to the number of spaces that are allowed. Otherwise, the use comes in for review by planning, commission, and council as a PUD amendment.
Okay, so the parking requirement is the limiting factor?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And at this point, we're, we're up against the summation of all of the, all of the people that are in the three buildings.
Right.
What does each use have, what is the required parking for that use, and what do we have left? So we do have a bit of a protection there from the standpoint of the existing tenants and what a, a large tenant that could cause traffic problems could get at. Does that make sense?
Oh, I had, totally, thank you.
Other questions? Commissioners, other comments? Commissioner Workman?
No questions.
No questions. Commissioner Walter? All right. This is a public hearing. I guess, I'm sorry, the, is the applicant in the room? Nope?
Actually, I have a question for the applicant.
Since the applicant is not in the room, I will, I guess, not give them the opportunity to be addressed.
They are from North Dakota.
Okay. This does require, I, I will hold the public hearing, and then we'll have further discussion. This is a public hearing, and at this point, I would like to open the public hearing and ask anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this issue to please step up to the podium and give us your name and address for the record. Good evening, sir, welcome back.
Good evening.
Thanks for your time. Don't forget to give us your name and address.
Jim Gible, I live at 1701 Victoria Lane. And good evening, staff and commissioners and chairman. I think I agree with about everything that's being stated thus far. The neighborhood, we've always stated that we were open for other types of businesses there that were in existence in the past and was compatible with the neighborhood. Two main concerns come from the residents. Did I lose the mic?
Nope.
It's kind of the unofficial designated watchdog for that corner. And one's kind of been addressed, and that, that's the size of a Fairview or Health Partner, I think, taken over one of those buildings. And it sounds like it's kind of covered based on parking and the number of people coming in and out, so that's why they're The other one that is of concern are, that would probably fall under the medical clinics is the, I think it's called a one-minute clinic in urgency. I've talked to three urgency facilities last week, and they're small business, they're three to five nurse practitioners, it's a 24/7 operation. So that would be a major, major concern, obviously, if we have a medical clinic of that sort going in with those types of hours and days of the week. So I don't know if, you know, you know, it's a medical clinic, I guess, so maybe based on the current definition of that, they could go in. We would not want that type of operation. We'd want to limit that, obviously, and I'm not sure with the best method for that to occur with that. So that's kind of the, the main ones from my viewpoint. Something on the side regarding your last conversation with Solar, at the end of all the sessions tonight, if you have five minutes, I'd be happy to share my experience as a city energy manager for the city of St. Paul, and Solar, and inspections and things that may help out, so I'll offer those services.
Thank you, appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the audience this evening that would like to speak? Please step up to the podium and give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everyone. Glad to be here again.
Welcome back.
Thank you. My name is Diana Mauer, and I live at 13800 Frontier Lane. So it's right across the street, right next to you. And for myself and my family, we very much enjoy our backyard, and beautiful fenced-in yard, kids and, and animals and ourselves are out there enjoying it all summer long and often in the winter, too. And the signage that is currently on, on the buildings that is lit is very bright, it's probably LED, and it's glaring, and it really does impede our use of, of, of the backyard in the evenings, not to mention, you know, it, it does go into our, into our sleeping areas at night, and so we've had to install special blinds or to block it out so that we could actually sleep. So I'd be concerned of the lighting that is allowed on the McAndrews' side of, of the building, and if this could, like you had mentioned with the trash enclosures, if that could be something that could be the owner of the building could manage that, rather than having that be, all of the different businesses be impacted by trying to have to manage, you know, electricians coming in and different timers and things like that would be helpful. Because right now, the building, I've spoken to the owners, they currently have the sign there, Edward Jones and the chiropractor business, and both of them mentioned that it'd be, you know, five to $800 apiece for them to have an electrician come in and change the current signage. Right now, they're on a timer, or not a timer, but on a sensor. So the light comes on all night long, it goes overnight and shuts off in, in the morning when the sun comes back on. And so there's, it appears that one of the businesses have simply shut their light off in trying to be accommodating and a good neighbor, which we appreciate, but we think that's kind of a drastic, you know, way to solve it, and it doesn't really make a win-win situation where they would have an opportunity to perhaps have their signs lit during their business hours in the evenings. And the other, the chiropractor wasn't able to, you know, fund any kind of change at this time. So currently, his light is the brightest and the biggest, and it's on all night long, too. So if there could be something that could be done to address this, so that the businesses are there that might have signs on the McAndrews' side could have lighting in some times where the, you know, the, the sun goes down, especially now here, going back away from daylight sign time to our, our standard time, you know, it would be nice for them to have some lit signs in the evening, but yet not to have it be overnight, you know, maybe during hours of business would be, what I would propose would be an option. And Ms. Garros, if there's, if you have any recollection for other businesses that is, are also there by Frontier Court, what the regulation is for them, I don't, I don't know of it. I wasn't involved in the neighborhood at that time when that structure was, was composed. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to this issue? Nope. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions based on the neighborhood and questions for Ms. Garros?
Sure.
Commissioner Benke?
Yeah. Ms. Garros, in, in the 1997 PUD, the fifth item talks about exterior lighting minimized so light sources not viewable from offsite, and there would be no light trespass beyond the site boundaries. How would that apply to lit signs?
What they were talking about at that point was the lighting standards, there was to be, I think initially to be, I think initially, no lighting or very limited lighting, and then the staff at the time proposed or recommended that there be two light fixtures installed for safety reasons, and then those fixtures needed to be hooded to meet that. As far as the signs themselves in this PUD, they were not limited. The underlying zoning was B3, and there's not a limitation on that.
Okay.
Across the street, those PUDs located east of the site, those PUDs were approved where the lighting is limited. I don't remember specifically, but it is limited. I'm not sure if it's just during the times that they're open or if it's from X time to X time, but they are limited. In this PUD, that was not a condition.
Okay, at that time?
Yes.
Okay, so, all right, back to the other notes. To the issue of a minute clinic or an urgency clinic, being a 24/7 operation, is there anything in the current PUD about operation, about hours of operation?
No.
It seemed to me that when we talked to the surrounding building across the street that there was some discussion about hours, but that was something that they brought to the table?
Yes.
Then the other thing, I think I'm back to the, the issue of a sign plan again. If there isn't one currently, we could certainly make one part of the recommendations?
The ordinance just requires that if there's going to be more than two signs, they need to submit a sign plan for that.
Okay, okay. So that's, okay, so that's just meeting the sign ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. And then that sign ordinance would also talk about lighting levels and hours of operation?
We have, there are brightness standards for the B3 zone. There are no limits on hours.
On hours.
I think for planning commission, we need to be careful about existing businesses and taking any rights that they have.
Sure.
It's something that you could apply, you know, add a condition to apply to future businesses.
Right.
But, yeah, we would need to confer with the city attorney on changes to any existing businesses.
Right. I thought I'd read in here somewhere also that the buildings were supposed to be sold condo-style?
No, they were, they were condoed a couple of years back.
Okay.
Initially, they were not going to be condoed.
Okay.
When the property came up for sale, they first looked into, could they subdivide the property to sell them separately, and they really couldn't because they don't have the land area, the frontage, et cetera?
Sure.
So it was at that point, they made the decision to go through with its county process to condo the units.
So when we talk about the landowner, we, and the renter, we're really not talking about a renter. We're talking about multiple layers of ownership?
I don't believe that they have, I believe that they are renting all of the condominium units.
Okay.
There's not a separate owner that is listed or part of the title work that was submitted.
Okay, and that, to me, that only goes to how large the layer is of the people who would need to be talked to to get things to happen here.
Yes.
Okay, so we are talking within a single entity right now?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Commissioner Levy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to go back to the signs. Two signs per building. Is that, can those signs be combined so multiple businesses can be on a sign, or is that sign per business? I'm not sure what, what signs are...
Basically, the way that the ordinance reads is you can have a sign, if you have a multi-tenant building, if you want to have more than two signs on that building, you need to submit a comprehensive sign plan, and then that would show the square footages, the location on the building, the type of sign dimensions, and type of lettering, et cetera, along with that. The area of the signs is not specifically limited. You can have two signs. It's based on the front facade area. You can have, I believe, up to 18% of that, but other than that, it's, it's not limited. And the, it used to be limited, more limited, and the city, we went through and made it more liberal so that buildings could have more signage. So now, basically, all they need to do is submit a plan, and then they need to follow that plan if they want more than two signs.
Commissioner Benke's comment about light levels, we can't go back easily, at least. For this application, can we put a limit on brightness?
The brightness, we have a standard. There is a standard in the ordinance for the brightness. There, if you want to include criteria, it's going to be difficult for us to enforce because we're going to have to always remember who was grandfathered and who wasn't and that type of thing, but you certainly can add a condition that, you know, from this point forward, any new tenant's lighting is limited to these hours of operation or only during business hours or something of that sort.
Commissioner Levy, other questions?
Thank you.
Commissioners, other questions of staff?
Sure.
Commissioner Benke?
For Commissioner Levy's comment, you said that they just need to provide a sign plan.
A comprehensive sign plan, yes, to have more than the two signs.
Correct, but that sign plan needs to be approved, though, too, by staff, correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Just wanted to be clear that they just didn't get to submit it, and they were done.
No, there are criteria. We do look at the criteria, square footage.
Wanted to make sure everybody heard that.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Garros, to specifically address the question of hours of operation, once again, are we in kind of a bad situation where we have existing tenants and we have the inability to limit a 24-hour operation? I understand the concern is same with the signs. We have existing tenants and the time that they function. And we, is there, do we have any options to try to address that situation?
You can as part of the PUD. As I said, you can place a limit from this point forward. I don't believe that we can do it going backwards. I think there's a taking there.
I'm in, I'm not in favor of any way, shape, or form changing anything that is, I understand that's, I'm, but I'm also questioning the, changing it going forward to your point about enforcement. So then does, how, what is the staff time involved in trying to move forward? Is it simple that the applicant, when they come in for a permit, have to meet the new regulation of not operating after 10 o'clock or something? Or help, help the commissioner understand that?
Yes, if you were to do that, if you were to limit new businesses to having hours, you know, their signage only during the hours that the business is open, what will happen with that is over time, you know, staff changes, people change, businesses change, and I'm just saying it's difficult in the long term to distinguish between, wow, this business was there and they're grandfathered and this wasn't. There are some things that we can do with our current software and whatnot, but it is, it's difficult over time, so I just want, want you to be aware of that. It's something that you certainly have as a purview to make that a condition, and staff will work to enforce it as much as we can, but I just know with similar types of things that happened 20, 30 years ago, you know, it comes up, you look at the PUD at the time an application comes in, but they may not look when a sign permit comes in at the whole PUD or something of that sort. It's just, in the scheme of things, you know, the signage, lighting is, we're looking at making sure that the health, you know, safety, welfare types of things are taken care of, and that's one thing that can slip through the cracks.
Okay. Commissioner Benke?
Wouldn't it fall under nuisance, though, if we, if it became a problem? I mean, is there elements of the nuisance or the, you know, if it is too bright and you have a complaint from a, from a neighbor, that can be investigated?
Yes.
And...
They can go out and take a look at the brightness, but I don't know that the brightness level that the ordinance has is going to be acceptable to the neighbors.
Right, right. I get that part, but I'm just saying that, to me, the test is going to be not so much from a staff standpoint because we're not going to have staff, if we did put a time on it, we wouldn't have a staff there at midnight to check the lights, make sure they're out. That kind of feedback typically comes from the neighbors where they see something that's not what they know belongs there.
Yes, and then that would be a code enforcement item.
Right.
But...
But, I mean, wouldn't, are there nuisances, and again, I don't, I don't have that chunk in front of me, are there nuisances that would, that some of this stuff would fall under?
I don't think when you get to signage, no. No, the nuisances are more, much more impactful. You can, like I said, you can certainly put those conditions on there. It's just the reality of over time.
Right.
It could slip, and if a property owner complains, you'd always go and investigate it and could do a standard code enforcement.
Right, and that's what I was trying to explore was the other avenues here, too. So a nuisance might be that they put a new light up and it's not a cutoff light, so all of a sudden, you have glare all the way across the parking lot into the neighbors' yards.
And that could be a code enforcement item that we could correct, yes.
Okay, okay. I just, yeah, thank you.
Commissioners, other comments? I haven't heard from the commissioners as to where they stand.
Mr. Chair, I'm in favor of the application that's before us, as it's written, and it would be, can we make a motion? Unless anybody else wants to say anything?
Commissioner Walter? I think I've heard from everybody else. Commissioner Workman, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's my recommendation that the planning commission recommend to the city council approval of the PUD amendment to allow personal services and medical clinic slash services in addition to office uses for the three buildings. I shouldn't be the last person that should have been doing this tonight. At 13754, 13770, and 13786 Frontier Court, subject to the following four conditions as written.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Singh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. Okay. That'll go in front of the city council on November 22nd. Thank you. That brings us to the sixth item on our agenda this evening, which is updates, and either Ms. Garros or Ms. Dean may have some updates for us.
I'll go ahead and pass along the future agenda for the Monday, November 28th, Planning Commission. It is draft, subject to change of course. Another update or just a FYI for the Planning Commission, as you're working on the comprehensive plan update and attending our comp plan meetings for that, if you feel the additional need for training or bringing forward some information to the rest of the Planning Commission, those opportunities are always welcome, so you can certainly work through myself or through Deb to do that. Just wanted to bring that up as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any commissioners, other items under updates?
Mr. Chair, it's not an update, it's a comment. I think we, as the planning commissioner, we need to congratulate Mayor Elizabeth Couch on being re-elected as mayor of our city, and we have two new city council members, Dan Gustafson and Amy Shuts, who would like to congratulate them on their election to the city council, and we look forward to working with them. Congratulations.
Thank you. I think we all echo that comment. I appreciate you bringing that up, Commissioner Singh. Other comments? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Benke.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Workman, and that was a big step for him because he can't talk.
You're bordering on that.
I know, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. Thank you very much, and have a safe drive home this evening. Thank you.